Good evening and welcome to the Cape Elizabeth School Board Regular Business Meeting, Tuesday, October 10, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on tonight's agenda are adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Item number two, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the school board minutes from the executive session in September 12, regular business September 12, workshop September 26, and special business September 26, 2017.
A second? Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item three, comments by student representatives.
Hi, I'm Allison Ingles. Emily Healy will not be here tonight as she has a soccer game. So I'm hoping to just give a brief overview of all the happenings at Cape Elizabeth High School right now. So tomorrow, the students will take the PSAT, grades nine, 10th, and 11th, and the seniors will have a late start. And this week is actually homecoming, so we kicked off the festivities today with USA Day. And we will culminate Friday with a pep rally, a football game, and hopefully a bonfire if weather improves. And then we'll have a homecoming dance Saturday night from 9 to 11. And sports are in full swing, definitely. The volleyball team is doing great. They are 12-0. Last, they just had a big win versus Falmouth, sorry. And the golf team won the Class D state title on Saturday by 24 strokes. That's the team final, and they'll have individual states this Saturday. And then, boys soccer and girls soccer are doing well. They both have games today. And finally, football is 4-2, and they have a game this Friday at home. The first math meet went well. There was a big turnout. Cape Elizabeth actually had the most amount of students from any school representing, so that participation was great. As I mentioned last week, or last meeting, sorry, the Yellow Tula Project, the idea about mental health awareness, we'll actually be planning the garden either this week or next week, so that's an exciting thing that we have on the upcoming schedule. The activities fair went really well, and there seems to be a general excitement on the clubs and a lot of enthusiasm, especially, we have a lot of freshmen excited, which is great to see them acclimating to the high school setting. There still seems to be a bit of controversy over the habit of work grades. One conflict that has arose is the question of whether ineligible means to simply participate in sports clubs and activities contests or activities in all, including practices. Including practices in this ineligibility would prove to be somewhat of a problem because a two-week suspension would most likely eliminate the remainder of the season, because many coaches have policies that if you miss a certain amount of games, you miss the equivalent number of prac-- or if you miss a certain number of practices, you miss the equivalent number of games, which would potentially take out an entire season, which would be sort of a punishment that I don't think that we're looking to give. And then, one other issue that has been brought to my attention is simply like the black-and-whiteness of the how grades. Because it's a zero-to-one scale, there really isn't any room for ambiguity, which can be hard, because say, a student completes three-fourths of their homework, they're still given a zero. Or, in the case that a teacher evaluates how grades on a weekly basis instead of a daily basis, which other teachers do do, there will be-- a student could turn in four out of five assignments in a week and still receive a zero. So, one proposal for that issue is having a scale, many other schools do this, like one through four, just giving a little bit more range. And then, of course, eligibility could be determined off that, just having a place marking that. And then, that's about it. Hopefully, we'll see some clearing up of the how grades. We've had meetings with all four grades, Mr. Shedd, about, just sort of to clarify the details, and I think the teachers are starting to get the hang of it, too, which is definitely helping. So yeah, that's all I have for you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, comments from the public on agenda items.
Hello, my name is Chris Straw, 597 Shore Road. I wanted to make some comments on item five C of the agenda, which is the MEA results that Ms. Stinkert will be giving you a presentation on. As an initial matter, to the extent that any of you are looking for independent justification or affirmation of your decision to have the Director of Curriculum be a full-time position, this is one reason why we needed to have it as a full-time position, so kudos for deciding to do that during the last budget cycle. So, I assume all of you have looked at the data. To the extent you haven't, I highly encourage you to really dig into it, ask Ms. Stinkert as many questions as you can with respect to the data. And there's one aspect of the data I wanted to focus on in particular, because it's of great interest to me and it's also probably of interest to two of you on the Board, at least, if not all of you, and that's the data with respect to the class of 2025, which, for those of you who don't know, since I don't speak year lingo, it's the current fifth graders. So if you look at the data for the current fifth graders, you'll see there is a significant drop-off in our math scores. And there's some questions that are raised from that. Why do we see this drop-off? And there's a couple potential answers. One would be, it was the switch-over from Smarter Balance to Empower Me, or Empower ME, whatever the test transition was. But yet, if you look at the other districts, which I'm probably front-running Ms. Stinkert's presentation, if you look at the other districts such as Yarmouth and Falmouth and the MSAD that she included, you see, we are the only district that had a significant drop-off as we see for that group. So it's something else. It isn't the transition from the data, so what else could it be? It could be our curriculum. It could be something with our curriculum. We need to dig into this. We need to find that out. One way we can get down into that data, and you guys have the ability to get to this data, and I realize the district just got their hands on it in the last week, and I'm sure Ms. Stinkert will be digging into this in detail, you can do an anonymous assessment of, did these problems arise from one particular classroom? Is it all the classrooms? If it's all the classrooms, it's probably something with our curriculum. But if it is derived from one or two classrooms, and yes, you have the ability to dig into this with the data, that raises some other questions that will need to be addressed. So, long story short, this is really, really valuable data. I strongly encourage you to dig into it. In particular, dig into what in the world happened with the class of 2025, because we deserve answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak to agenda items tonight? Seeing none. Moving on to item five, communications. Would like to start with Portland Arts and Technology High School program students. Mr. Shedd?
So I'd like to introduce Andy Erskine, who's here to talk about his experience at PATHS. I've been looking around for another student. I was expecting another student, but I'm thinking something came up with his family that he's probably not able to attend. The other student was Antonio Vassilian, who was prepared to talk about the masonry program, but we're happy to have Andrew here. And this is Andrew's teacher, Beth Milroy, who's been helping him get ready for this presentation. So, take it away, Andrew.
My name is Andy Erskine. Went to PATHS today. I am taking orders to kids.
So Andy's going to share with you some of his experiences at PATHS and the food service program. And he's passing around some photos that he's going to describe, as well as a couple of packets similar to what he's reading from. But he has the colored copy. You're going to get the black and white.
Taking orders is a fun job, because I take to take, take, get to talk to other kids. I use the iPad to take orders, then my friend cooks the food. I take food to kids in other classes. It's hard to bounce the tray sometimes, but I have not spilled yet. We wear hats and eyepants and glasses. Pizza. Making pizza is my favorite job, eating pizza, and also, my favorite at PATHS is making the dough. This is pizza. This pizza is on Friday, all by myself. I use the biggest mixer, one that uses 24 cups of flour. Cookies. Some of the other kids makes their, these cookies. My job is wrap them up. If I bring some money, I can buy one. They look really good. And also, always want to eat the cookie dough that is in the walk-in fridge. Going to PATHS makes me smile, and I love it. Done.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
I know what you're talking about with that cookie dough. It's hard to resist. Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Andy. Thank you for your presentation. Public speaking is some people's greatest fear. You did a fantastic job. Thanks for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five B, principals update. And Mr. Mangerides could not be with us tonight because of a family conflict?
Right, and I believe the principals are going to bow out so that they can jump in this MEA. Am I right about that?
Correct.
Right, so.
We'll move on to item five C.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to project the slides, so apparently the projector takes a few minutes to warm up, so while that's happening, I made enough changes to the presentation following a really helpful meeting this morning with the three principals, and I'm actually going to give you new copies, and then it will be updated on website. Okay, great. So I'm here to talk to you about the results of last spring's MEA testing. I'm going to start with, whoops. Okay. So I'm going to start with a quick review of why we have these tests and what they do. We are required by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which is better known as NCLP or ESSA, is the most recent iteration of the ESEA. It stands for Every Student Succeeds Act. Requires annual testing in ELA in math in grades three through eight and in the third year of high school, and in science in grades five, eight, and the third year of high school, and that is typically 11th grade, obviously. And then, the MEA, Main Education Assessment for ELA Literacy and Mathematics, in grades three through eight is called the Empower Me or Empower Me, and this is the second year of the Empower Me testing, which is useful to us, because now we can look for growth in our students from one year to the next. In grade 11, or that third year of high school, the assessment is the SAT. And then we have the MEA science, again, in grades five, eight, and the third year of high school. So performance is reported at four levels, at state expectations, above state expectations, below state expectations, and well below state expectations. And along with getting the results of last spring's testing, we have, too, the ESEA report card, which is part of that federal mandate, and it's based on the prior year's data, and there's a link to it if you're interested in looking at it. Any questions so far? I cannot get used to this mic, okay? I hope I'm not blasting you. All right, so the first slide shows the performance of our district relative to the state, which appears now at the far right. You can see that the state, entire district, the state in ELA literacy at all grades came to 52% and 58% at or above proficient, at or above state expectations, so how we define proficiency. The four districts that are depicted here were the highest performing school districts in the state. If I didn't include in that the districts that have fewer than 200 students who took the test, because that would include schools like charter schools like Baxter Academy or districts that are just a single school district. So, just looking at districts that had more than 200 students who took the test, these were the top four. So, a lot worth celebrating here, then, that Cape Elizabeth is in the top four, and as a district, we, our students who are at or above state expectations were at 66, 76, excuse me, .38%. Yep?
These are composite scores for all grades tested.
Correct. Yep. This is district by district. And then, the next slide shows district performance in math. And are you able to read the numbers, or would you like me to read them to you? You can see them.
We can read them. We can see them.
You can see them? Okay, great. Thank you. So again, the state was at 38.54%, so quite a bit lower than in ELA literacy, and that was true for all of the districts as well. Okay, and then, science. Less of a difference between the state performance and the top four performing school districts. I'm not sure I made clear that we were, those four districts depicted were the top four in all three content areas. Okay, I'm actually going to start with science, which is a change from the original handout you received, because the, for reasons that I'm going to explain, the data, the science data is actually less valuable to us than the ELA literacy and math data. But before I get into that, just a few words about the test. It is a paper pencil test. It's aligned to the main learning results and not to the next generation science standards, which is one of the reasons why the data is less valuable to us. We, like all of the other districts in the state, are aligning our curriculum to the next generation science standards. We anticipate that those will eventually be passed by the state legislature, that they will vote to adopt them as our state standards. But so, we don't want to put a lot of time into getting our students ready to do well on an assessment that is more than likely going to go away. There is a bill before the legislature, and we're hopeful that it will pass. They'll start, they'll take it up again in January. As far as the test sessions go, so there are three 30-minute sessions for grade five, three 35-minute sessions for grade eight, and two 50-minute sessions for grade 11. We had participation rates of 96% this year, and then there's a link to the released items, if you're interested in looking at those. The second reason, in addition to the fact that they're aligned to the MLR and not the NGSS, that the data is less valuable to us, is that you don't have cohort data. So as you'll see on the next slide, you can only look at how one group of students did in the fifth grade, and then how the next year's fifth graders did, but we can't establish whether a particular group of students improved. What this data tells us is probably more about the relative strengths and weaknesses of specific cohorts. So in that case, then, you want to make sure that your data is comparable to the districts with which you compare yourself. And so, in the case of the fifth grade, we, in the 2015-2016 school year, we actually were the highest performing school district in the state, and then last year, we were the third highest performing school district in the state. Any questions about that?
Just a general question. I was looking through some of this data, and some of the changes, they all seem to be, some of them relatively minor, and I'm just also wondering a little bit about, what's the persistence of these data? So, in other words, if you take the same exam twice, you're going to get different scores, and it will start to focus around a result. So what's the sort of expected variation around these? So some of what we're seeing is noise, and some of it may be cohort to cohort, some of it may be something that's real, we need to pay attention to, and so knowing the scale of what those noise levels are, expected noise levels are, is very helpful in looking at the data.
And I can actually get, so, on average, if I'm understanding you correctly, I did dip into that a little bit today, and they have a tape, there is on the state website a table that looks at accuracy and consistency, and there's a whole lot of statistics underlying it, but basically, they would say that 90% of the time, the same group of students would perform at the same level, so. And I can share that chart with you.
Within what band is what I'm asking.
Right.
So, in other words, if your true score, you do it a whole bunch of times, is going to be 95, the band might be between 90, you know, three points, or it might be 10 points, depending on the test, depending on the number of observations, those kinds of things.
Yeah, and that data is available.
It's helpful sometimes in characterizing this, to be able to, particularly when there's small differences, to know what that is, because you don't want to be chasing noise.
Right. I agree.
And if there isn't much, then that's also important to know.
Okay. So then, grade eight. Again, without having dug in a good deal, the differences that we're seeing don't appear to be super significant. And then, for 11th grade. More of a drop, one year to the next, which could be about the cohort, it could be about the test, it could be about the sorts of things you're talking about, John, we just don't know.
Are you going to release enough items this year for you to be able to dig in item analysis-wise, to see if it's content that's tricking us up?
I don't know if that's the case with science. But I'll look into it.
I just always want to be clear. I think there may be some real significant differences here, but to be able to calibrate that, that's why the competency and all stuff is important. And it really changes group to group. Big groups, you might have a very competent narrow range, smaller groups, it can get very wide.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, the Empower Me assessment, then, just a reminder about this, grades three through eight, it's online, it's static, not adaptive anymore like the Smarter Balance assessment was. It is aligned to the main learning results, but that includes the Common Core, so we've been aligning our curriculum to the Common Core, so therefore, we're all set there. And then, there's a description of test sessions, two math, two reading, two running language, and one essay. And we have excellent participation rates, 100% at concove, and 97% at the middle school. And again, there's a link to released items. And we got the data last week, so we have not started digging into those released items, so. Okay, so here we have the year-to-year comparison, so the third grade two years ago, and then last year's third grade, the fourth grade two years ago, and then last year's fourth grade, et cetera. Again, this is, just so you could see how the grades were doing relative to each other, and, but I'm personally more interested in the cohort data, which is on the next slide. Okay, so this, then. So this shows the performance of individual cohorts, and I had the classes wrong in the presentation, the slides that you looked at originally. So, if you start at the right, the class of 2021 is actually our current ninth grade. So this is showing how they did, how that class did when they were in seventh grade in 2015, 2016, and then how they did when they were in eighth grade, so in 2016, 2017. So it's the current fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade, left to right. And this is what we want to see. Our students are improving every year, third to fourth, fourth to fifth, fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh. They drop a little bit in the eighth grade, they're taking this test, not to make excuses, but they're second semester eighth graders, and if you've lived with a second semester eighth grader, it may not come as a surprise to you that there might be a dip. That's just, again, I don't want to be complacent, but I will certainly look at it, but if there were going to be a place where I was going to see a dip, second semester eighth grade is probably one where I would predate. Okay, and then in math, the picture is, oh, this, actually, before I, so this, again, is just looking at one grade-three cohort and another grade-three cohort, one grade-four cohort, cohort, another grade-four cohort, cohort. So you can see that fifth grade, that fifth grade test is more difficult. So you can see that fifth grade, that fifth grade test is more difficult, or, anyway, or, or the preparation is different, anyway, there's something, something to look at. But it's not like we had a huge drop from one year to the next in that grade that we've been looking at. And then the next slide shows the cohort data. And so again, this is showing the current fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, and how they did in the two previous years. So this cohort picture is a little bit more mixed than the ELA literacy cohort picture was. We see a decrease in student performance from third to fourth grade, and from fourth to fifth grade. So I was interested in looking at other school districts and seeing whether the same pattern was observable in those places. And that's what the next slide shows. So this is showing the class of twenty-twenty-five, which is actually our current fifth grade, so going from third grade to fourth grade. And then looking at the same in the other three top-performing districts. And you can see that three of the four showed a decline. And then, looking at the class of twenty-twenty-four, balderies districts showed a decline. And I do think it's important that we look at why the Cape Elizabeth declined so much greater, and why the overall number is so much lower. And that's certainly something that we'll be taking a look at. But I did want to point out that every cohort showed, showed a decline. Every class of twenty-twenty-four cohort showed a decline. Okay, so, well, any questions about the numbers?
I, I just am glad to hear you say that some of these overall numbers are still in a frankly kind of unacceptable range.
Mm-hmm. Yes, they are.
And I wouldn't expect to see us performing at the fifteenth percentile of proficiency in this community. So I'll be happy to hear from you a little later about two things. One is use of the early release time for professional development around math. And second of all, how we're going to really use those newly funded RTI coaches to assist kids that are struggling. Because I do know that some of our comparison districts have a lot greater capacity for support personnel than Cape has enjoyed in the past. But those numbers should be a bit concerning. And I hear that from you too, so thank you.
Okay, so, ongoing work at PONCOV, the next steps that we have planned, in terms of curriculum instruction. So you know that we're engaged right now in writing learning targets and scoring criteria in ELA literacy particularly, and that that work is supported by the professional development. We've engaged two consultants to work with our PONCOV teachers on the PD Wednesdays. And I, the, the feedback for their work has been very, very positive. Teachers feel like they're learning a lot, and that they're able to implement what they're learning in the classroom right away. And the fact that it's occurring, that the professional development, that they can try, they can learn something, and they can try it out and come back and talk about it, that that schedule is working really, really well for them. We've also been having conversations around the need for keyboarding, which hasn't been consistently taught. And we think that that would help our students on these tests. It's also just part of the Common Core, that students be able to, that they be able to keyboard. And so we are beginning that instruction in the third grade. And for this year only, may offer it in the fourth grade as well. And so it's just there, using a tap-touch program on the iPad. And then, and then our grade-three and grade-four teams are engaging, are going to engage in subscore analysis. We do have a fair amount of subscore data by the individual student, so that will be very useful to us, both from a curriculum instruction point of view and also in terms of intervention. So as far as intervention goes, we, we do feel more supported this year, and thank you for that. We have four RTI teachers instead of three and a half. That tier-three intervention, that really intensive intervention, that's typically pull-out, is ongoing. We're in the process of completing NWE testing. And once that's done, then we'll start to push in with our RTI attacks. And we have five now instead of two. And that's, we anticipate that that's going to be really beneficial in terms of ensuring that students get the support that they need in order to meet our standards. And then, once we have the, you know, dig down and drill down into the MEA results, and then we also have the NWE data, that we will be reconfiguring those tier-two and tier-three lists. And just, and that work will be done, overseen by the students' support team. And we are using NWA rather than the STAR. I think we've talked about that before. That middle school teachers had given both the NWA and the STAR, and they felt that the NWA data was much more accurate. And we felt like we really needed to pick one assessment, so that we could see how students did over a period of time. So now we'll have longitudinal data in grades three through eight. Actually, we're doing, actually, starting at the, in the spring of kindergarten, so we're going to have longitudinal data in grades one through eight. It's a slightly different assessment, but... Any questions about PONCOV?
Just a, just a, oh, go ahead.
So, this data is relatively new. Has the staff had a chance to sort of talk about the data?
I just met with the principals this morning.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm, I'm sort of wondering, I was interested to hear back in the future a little bit in terms of, so were these results expected or not expected? And if they were expected, what did they think was going on? And if they weren't expected, that's a different conversation. Because, you know, teachers who've seen lots of grades go through could often have a very, you know, it's a qualitative view on things. You may have, it may offer great insight as to where you think about putting your efforts, as well as a way to have a, an approach. You could think, well, if it's this, we can try this and see a result or not. You can be able to test out what people think maybe is going on. But if it's a surprise, it's a different conversation.
Right.
So I'd be interested to know what the result of that dialogue is.
And do you mean surprise in terms of the overall results, or surprise in terms of individual students?
Overall.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so this is only the second year of this assessment, so I don't know that there was a lot of predicting going on in that regard. But, but I think that the subscore data will be very useful. I mean, that will, I think it's important that teachers see how the subscore data aligns to the curriculum instruction that they're delivering.
It, it might be a V's testing, but we've been testing our students for years and years and years and years. And many teachers have seen tests over years and years and years, and variation over years and years have often have a view as to what's going on.
Okay. You, you sort of just touched on it, but I'll be curious when you do look at the subscores, which show the individual student, is that what it means from point of view to the next?
The subscore data is actually, like, within, like, a math curriculum, right? You would have, you'd have your numeracy, you'd have your algebra. And so it's, it's, that's what I mean by subscore. It's, it's, it's the curricular subscore. But we also have...
Do you miss thinking your...
Exactly, exactly. Algebra, geometry, numeracy.
I was going to ask you to explain a little bit more about...
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
And how you use it.
And so, we would want to see is there alignment between, if, if there are thirty question, well, actually, we saw this, and Jeff will be speaking to this in terms of high school, but one of the things that was observed around the SAT was that there were many more statistical questions than there were questions about geometry. And so that changes the curriculum, then. I mean, it should change the curriculum, right? So that's what we want to see, is there alignment between what the test is emphasizing and what we are emphasizing in our curriculum. So that's, that's where the, that's the value of the subscore data, just in terms of your, in terms of a class as a whole. The subscore data is also really helpful in terms of individual student performance, where the student may actually be proficient in two of the three areas that, in curriculum areas that informed the score, but because they were really low in one area, that brought them down. So we'll be doing both of those things.
And then that's great. And I would love to know, when you get to that point, what, what data, what you need from that data, once you sort it out.
I am happy to come back. Thank you. Okay, then, at the middle school, just for ease, is Miss Bree to join me for this?
No.
Or to the extent that, he's, he's right here.
I don't need to read it all. But I think, basically, what we're talking about, and how we're going to use our intervention is that we have a two. I believe we had one before, so one person before grade, so that was two, which was much coverage. I believe as we're going to, as a team, sit down and look at the test scores and start to dig into those a little bit. I don't like the word "pat," that's the joke of the analogy, sort of, in my own business, but that's really what we did, was to go pat through the stages, to see, you know, whatever is where we're strong and whatever is where we're not. If the interventionist is going to be able to be effective, if writing the prescription is going to help solve some of the problems, we're kind of going to know what the symptoms are, right? So that seems like a good way to think about it to me. And then when you look at the large spreadsheet, which has all kids, then I think it's easier to group and regroup kids. Right now, we're providing information, pull-out to about over twenty-two, between twenty-two and twenty-five kids, between the two of them, so it's, it's going. But I'm not, we were using limited data, because we didn't have our own Facebook, we didn't have this, this test room. So now it's time to kind of relook. We're also pushing in services into three classrooms right now, which really is more of a totally, you know, total approach as opposed to something a couple of kids. So that's kind of the direction they're in. I think this is going to provide us more of a targeted approach as to what's going on with this group of kids. And it may be different for this group than this group. Some of them have got it wrong, and some of the subtests, and others. And I think it's important that we're teaching the right kids to break it. Now, that sounds really easy, but it's not like you have to go in there and be kind of, and you're able to do it. So that's kind of our next steps, is looking forward to that. The professional development days have been very successful, the early release days have been too. The first one was really Kathy and I talking about setting the direction of the district, mostly proficiency-based education, things like that, and where we're at. Then the next one, my interventionist ran and said, hey, this is what I gave you guys, you can run. I find it helpful to be standing there talking, because it's a year, kind of leading that. It was, some of the feedback was awesome, but it was really about, here's this tool, the NWA, which produces a comatose. And often, we just look at the RIT score and say, oh, we're going to group them like that. Truly not the right way to do it all, totally, because different, different parts go within that score. My strengths, we do different things, Kathy's, and then we may have the same average. But I really need help on something different. So that whole professional development was designed around, here's this tool, we have NWA, we showed them a couple of reports they can run to kind of really show what some kids do. And then doing it for the next step to say, so if you had this, this profile, you needed a tier-two intervention, we have Common Academy, and we have IXL, and this is how you would use it. And it showed how to go through that next step between that. So really trying to help teachers, support them with the in-class support, which is really tier-one, a little bit of tier-two, as we're really just getting ready to identify the kids who will have a more intensive reverse support. So that's kind of where we are. So very excited about having the interventionist. This is, without them, it's another thing to put on the plate with the teachers. And when you play this pretty full, it's hard to find a place, like, where do you, what do you value the most? And it's something that has to go. So this is the top priority as far as we've set it for middle school for the interventionist. It's really, it's targeted for the right kids, to get kind of the support they need, so that we're kind of working in the right direction. So that's where we are, is where we're going. And the next steps are really sitting down and working with this, with this information.
Yeah, I wanted to put in a plug for the, the subscore analysis and analysis of the released items that's going to take place in that work. We hope will be facilitated by the content leaders, which is a new position that you're going to be asked to vote on later in the evening, so. Any other questions or thoughts about the middle school? All right, we'll move on to the high school, then. Okay, so, the SAT, just a brief review. Third year of high school, paper pencil, aligned to the MLR, again, including the Common Core state standards. It was given to our students on a school day, students throughout May. Last year was April 5th. Been a ninety-eight percent participation rate, link to released items, if you're interested. One of the interesting things that I want to give Jeff credit for uncovering, that was not on the slides that we originally sent to you, is that the state's benchmarks for proficiency are actually higher than either the college, College Board, which is the author of the assessment, or SMCCs. So you can see that, so the state set defined at or above proficiency at a four-seventy for ELA literacy and a five-thirty for math, whereas the College Board said four-sixty or above, and in ELA literacy, a five-ten or above in math. And then SMCC, you have a four-fifty or above in ELA literacy, then you go into a college-level course. And if you have a four-ninety or above on math, same thing, you go into a college-level course. Interesting that the state chose to do this, and I don't know, I don't know why. Interested in finding out. But I, that may change the way you look at some of the data. So, again, we don't have cohort data, so we just look at, I mean, you have the comps for you, the area comps. But then I wanted to mention that, so, so for me, there, there is here a lot to celebrate. I, it's, it's important that we pay attention to how our students are doing all along the way. Each grade level is a benchmark. But to me, the SAT is really, have, have we done our job? Have we, have we gotten our students where they need to be? We want to graduate our students college and career-ready. They're taking this assessment at the end of their junior year. We have one more year. And so if you look at that data and you see that we're at, this past year, at, I'm sorry, I can't read it, eighty-seven, eighty-seven point five, is that? Okay. I forgot to bring my glasses up. So we had a hundred and eleven students take the SAT. If you use the state's definition of proficiency, ninety-seven of those a hundred and eleven students were proficient. College Board definitions, ninety-eight. If you use SMCC, a hundred, a hundred of those a hundred and eleven students, or ninety percent of our students, were at or above the state expectations. So that means that eleven of our students, at the end of their junior year, if they were going right onto college, would need to take a placement test to determine whether they were ready for college-level work. I think that's pretty good. Any questions about that? And then the same thing with math. Math numbers lower across the board. If we use the SMCC benchmark, then eighty-two percent, or twenty, of those a hundred and eleven students would need to take a placement test at college. So you can bet that we're paying attention. We know who those twenty students are, and we want to make sure, over the course of the next year, that they are college and career-ready. And last, then, where are we in terms of what's happening, curriculum instruction-wise, intervention-wise, and where do we want to go? So Jeff, do you want to come up, or?
Sure. Excuse me. So as Kathy's light here indicates, one of the things that was doing the SAT, a couple times last year was more data, more statistics. So teachers did a good job of sort of including daily statistics, including courses, and more, so I think it's here to do that. And the other areas were non-calculated questions. We saw that our students tended to do not quite as well on the non-calculated questions as the calculator questions, because I believe that our kids used to calculate a certain degree. And so the teachers have been trying to incorporate more non-calculated practice. Also, just in the second year, they've been also talking, of course, about quantitative reasoning. Mr. Beal's teaching, it's a junior-level course with that SMCC. And actually, I would venture to guess, and I would specifically, that probably most of the twenty kids who were below proficiency, have been greater than a colleague in that class. And I know that they have all, all the students have taken the X place, or the Y place, or the R place, or two of those students, through that class, who are in that proficiency, and who are in that high, which is great. The other thing is not in the... The other thing is not in here, as I forgot to talk to Kathy about it, was fractions. Our kids tend to do not quite as well with questions and with complicated fractions. So the teachers have been including more practice for that. So this year, all of our math students, I think, was having great pleasure taking the AccuPlacer last week, so. And some students who didn't meet college benchmarks or didn't have to do some additional work, and that's really for their benefits, or hopefully, when they go to college, they will be able to do college work. Different students, depending on the three level, they were in two different areas of the AccuPlacer, so it was appropriate for their, where they were. The English department is meeting next week, actually, with an English professor called SMCC, and what about us, we are doing a little course, English for seniors. So they're quite excited about that. They're also looking at similar reviews of the AccuPlacer, similar exam. And when our students take the PSATs and the AccuPlacer, they may be able to start to get assigned a new certificate, et cetera, and then group their scores. We did that last year in a mini-pilot based on the PSAT scores, having kids go to the AccuPlacer, et cetera. Well, I don't want to say that this is causing that, because of whether the component area that we're in there, because some of the students gave everything in all the courses as well. But I think it's around seventy percent of students who participated in that pilot program, to have an ACQ, to have a way to be, to be, to be. That was exciting, and I think, and that's it. Any questions?
And just a word about the AccuPlacer. It is, it is an online adaptive exam, and because of that, students get immediate feedback, and it's also a much shorter exam. So for students for whom the three-and-a-half-hour SAT is just, is an exercise in endurance, often the AccuPlacer will produce better and arguably more accurate results for students. And I think that's, the present, yeah, there we go. The only other thing I wanted to mention under data is that, so even though we don't have cohort data with the SAT, it is important to us to get a read on our students in every year of high school. And so, we will have the grade-eight NWA taken in the spring, that can inform intervention for the first semester of ninth grade. And then, in the fall of ninth grade, students will take the grade-nine, grade-eight, nine PSAT, and those results come back in January, so they can inform intervention for the sprint. And then we have the PSAT in the tenth grade and the eleventh grade, as well as the SAT. So, lots of opportunities for us to gather data, data on our students, and triangulate it with other data points, class performance, et cetera. Comments or questions from the board?
One last comment. It's fun talking to Kathy this week, she and I worked together for a while, but I, one thing I like about these top-four districts in our comparisons, we're all small enough to be agile, and so that when we, even though this is a one-data-point test, we always have put quite a bit of emphasis on it. So, with the agility of you who work with principals, to work with teachers, to work with interventionists, and really target in on some of these weaker spots, and come up with, whether it's use of your professional time, whether it's new use of interventionists or so forth, I would like to really encourage that continued focus on agility and responding to what we're seeing here that frankly has some alarming numbers in it, so.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to digging in.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you for your attention. It really is just an introduction. We hope to come back and give you more information.
Love to hear more.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 5D, the superintendent's report. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, a question that was raised by a candidate of the school board recently, asking, when one becomes a board member, like, given an email account through the town? And I was hearing different answers to that. And I met with Noel, who was in charge of technology for the entire town, and then also, he wanted to bring in the town manager, Matt. And Matt informed me that the town is definitely moving in that direction, that as of December first, they want all town council members to be using an email account through the town, and that he would appreciate that the school would begin to move in that direction as well. So, if any of you are willing to move, I think the thinking behind it is that when there are requests for right-to-know information, looking at emails and all, it's so much easier just to have one place, just pull them all, rather than having you have to go through all your personal emails, separate out personal from schoolwork. And they've had several requests like that recently for the town, and it's just a reminder to him how convenient it is to have it all under one system. So, if you're willing to have the town initiate an email address for you, if you just let Andrea know, then she can have one set up for you, and then you can start using that whenever it's convenient. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just wanted you all to know that Peter Esposito, who runs our food service nutrition program, has initiated what's called a backpack program, which provides meals for students to take home on weekends and over extended periods of time away from school, when they can't get the advantage of meals and breakfast and lunch at school. And if you know of any family that would benefit from that support, I mean, these are healthy snacks, good things, and don't necessarily require refrigeration. So if you know of families that might benefit from that, they should really speak to their school administration, nurses, administrators, and they'll get connected, and that will be provided immediately. I also wanted to bring to your attention that there seems to be an increased interest in the area of Cumberland County, of districts looking at starting time for schools. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that, right now, our times are seven fifty-five for high school and middle school, and eight thirty-five for K-4. But an extreme shift for next year at Scarborough will be, their K-5 will start at eight o'clock in the morning, their middle school will start at nine, and the high school starts at eight fifty. And other districts in the area are beginning to look at a later start time, especially for high school as well. This becomes problematic in terms of scheduling students to go to Pass or Westbrook Vocational Schools, when you're as much as an hour off. It's really hard for those schools to schedule start times for their programs. It's also difficult for actual school programs to include athletics and other opportunities that bring schools together to work together or to compete. And so, it's nothing that, I think is for us a burning issue, but we have to be paying attention to the fact that there could be a growing number of schools moving to later start times, and we, you know, we could be wondering about that ourselves, I guess, at some point. I don't think it's an issue for this year, but I think it's made to think about in the future, to just keep an eye on it. I know of two other schools in the area that are talking about moving closer to nine o'clock starting times. So this is not, I don't think that, maybe Scarborough now is an anomaly. I don't think that they're going to be for very long. So, I just bring it to your attention. I also wanted to be sure that you knew about, I think you received a notice from the Department of Education stating that the proficiency diploma rule, according to state, has been, they have withdrawn the current proposed rules. That is not to say they're moving away from the statute that says that we will have proficiency-based education and diplomas, that still stands. What's in limbo are the rules that get us there. And the state's using words such as, they're looking for a process that's going to be substantially different in chapter 134, and that in October, November, they're going to be asking to meet with teachers and administrators to explore all this. I mean, one of the obvious concerns, it hasn't been answered very well by the state, but it's big that they've not done their job, to be quite candid, in setting a direction, they've left it to local control, which at times can be chaotic. But the whole question around, how do you measure and define proficiency for children that are very different from one another, is part of what is out there. And we are very clear, and proud of us, that we are not talking about different kinds of certificates or diplomas here at Cape. It's one diploma, everybody who graduates gets the same thing. So, that's, I think, exactly where we want to be. But how are we going to be able to be sure that the challenge for proficiency is rigorous and appropriate for individual children, that's the challenge that others will be working on. We have administrators and teachers that will be weighing in on this at the diverse meetings that are offered up at the state. I've heard today from the administrators and board members received that the deadline for the fall proposals of teachers and administrators and staff for grants is next Monday, the sixteenth, so it'll be enjoyable to see what people come up with and what's approved. I think that by late October, they'll be actually meeting with teachers and administrators to hear about their ideas, and probably by November, I'll have a list to show you and share what has been approved. I also want to acknowledge that we have a number of students that attend our schools on what's called a super-tennis agreement between super-tennis. A child attending a school, or they don't, very doesn't reside, but it's in the child's best interest to attend a school other than their local school. And Andrea Fuller has just a very, very good job along a lot of other things that she does incredibly well, of just monitoring and keeping a record of that and tracking it, and then as part of what she does, she turns in to the state, notices those children, and we each year receive seven additional monies, in terms of an offset for subsidy because of that. And this last year, just recently, I received a letter from the state saying that this year, we're going to be receiving an additional sixty-six thousand dollars, that if it weren't for Andrea, this wouldn't be coming in, as far as I could tell. And I just really want to acknowledge that, that's just, you know, that's unanticipated additional revenue that we are going to spend this year, but it's money that will help fund your next budget. That's sweet. So, thank you to her for that.
Thank you, Howie.
Item 5E, I'd like to just update the public on our superintendent search. So I'm excited to say that we have launched our 2017 superintendent search. We began advertising a little over a week ago, advertising broadly, using online media as well as print media, and also what I find to be most effective is word of mouth. Word of mouth discussion about Cape Elizabeth is incredibly positive this year, it's an asset to us, so that's really exciting. Interested candidates can go to our website if they want to learn about our district and learn about this particular process and timeline. We have a superintendent search site, which you can access from the main page of the Cape Elizabeth district site, and candidates may go to the employment page of the Cape Elizabeth district site and enter in through AppleTrack that way. People that are interested in the timeline can click on the timeline link. I'm not going to go through all the timelines, but what I will share is that the board is moving aggressively. We will begin interviewing mid-November and hope to have that good match candidate before winter break in December. So I encourage the public to be paying attention to opportunities, to come in and, you know, meet finalists and that sort of thing. We're hoping to have participation from parents and community members, administration at the central office, as well as building level, students, parents, I said parents already, teachers, as well as board members. That group minus the students will comprise our search committee. Our search committee will not only read and rank applications and make recommendations for first-round interviews, but that committee will conduct first round as well as second-round interviews, because we have found that having that kind of longitudinal approach, where people are able to kind of move along together in the process, is very helpful. At this time, we have had several, many, more than several, several people email the board with their interest in being a part of the search committee, and what we are doing is we're trying to cast a wide net. We'd like to have a very broad representation of parents over all three schools. We're hoping not to have everybody on the committee that just represents the middle school, for instance. So, we are not just sticking to very, you know, narrow parameters, we're really looking for, you know, where do you, where are your students? Have you participated in town boards or committees before? Are you, you know, we're trying to pull people in who've never been pulled in before, that sort of thing. So, we'll be getting back to people soon, that committee work will begin soon. The application deadline is November 6th, so that's really when the committee gets going. So I'll be getting back to you next month and letting you know how that's going. John?
Add one little blurb. For people who might know excellent qualified superintendent candidates, this is a great, high-achieving district, one board, great community support, zero dropout rate, just in a capsule. There's a lot to like here.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, new business. Oh, yeah?
So, this is a request for you to approve a new plan for the evaluation of your principals. We have a plan, we don't feel the plan is as clean and as useful as we would like, we meaning principals that I am. And we plagiarized the heck out of the plan from Farnworth, wanting to be much more streamlined, straightforward, useful to us. We've submitted it to the Department of Ed, they're satisfied, but they need, before they put it as our new plan, to have you formally approve it. So we think this is a step forward, it's a plan we want to use this year, for several more years, before, maybe we might modify it a bit, but we think this is a much better starting point than what we have currently, so we would ask for your approval of a new plan, as submitted in your packet.
Thank you, Howie.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Cape Elizabeth School Department's Administrators' Performance Evaluation and Professional Growth Plan.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the following 2017-18 Administrative Athletic and Extracurricular Personal Nominations as listed in our agenda for tonight. I noticed there's just one blank under Theater Class Productions, is there any update, Mr. Shatton, on that?
Yep, I would propose, and I'm sorry, it wasn't in the packet, Mr. Richard Mullin to do the Theater Class Productions. to do the Theater Class Productions.
So, I move we include that name in the list of accepted Athletic and Extracurricular
May I have a second? Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who's willing to step up and be a part of the extracurricular and athletic community. Without your help, these students wouldn't have these opportunities, so we thank you.
There's mentors on this list, too, people who professionally step up to work with some of our newer teachers, so that's great.
Thank you. I didn't flip it over to mentor. Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed? Item 6C. May I have a motion, please?
I would like to move that we approve JJJ High School Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities Eligibility and Code of Conduct Policy as referenced.
A second. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to turn your attention to page 2 of the policy language you have in your packets. And I'd also like to thank our student representative for some commentary about this, continued worries about this, I understand, but I also appreciate very much that Mr. Shedd has now met, as he said he would, with a wide range of students at every grade level. And one of the small tweaks he'd like to make to the language, which I think is highly acceptable, is around this idea of habits of work grades as they go down this path. So, his suggestion is, as you know, before the academic grades, we're passing a minimum of four classes, grades of 70 or above, per main principal association requirements by athletic and extracurricular eligibility, and passing habits of work grades, grades of 70 or above, in all courses or all but one course. That was one thing that he talked about, students about, so if there was just one class where there was some issue with timeliness, sort of teenager point, that that would not exclude eligibility. So, if we add the phrase at the end of that first sentence, passing habits of work grades, grades of 70 or above, in all courses or all but one course, would be the expectation for eligibility. And with that, I'm very satisfied that this is a reasonable first step for us in really encouraging the timeliness and the responsibility of responding to teachers that we're hoping for as we go down this path of habits of work. And I think any other questions that arise or concerns, Mr. Shedd seems completely open and working through student concerns about that, so I think the policy, I really encourage that the policy be passed this evening.
I'd like to echo Barbara in thanking Mr. Shedd for going back and working through this with the students. It's clear that you've put a lot of time and energy into this. And to our student representatives' point around confusion around what does ineligibility mean? Does it mean practices? Does it mean just no contests? I think it would really be wise to make that crystal clear. And I think we can, that may not need to be in the policy at this time. It's something that can be worked out in athletic handbook or that sort of thing, but I'm sure that the board would like to also have that clarified. It's a fair point. But again, just so grateful for your willingness to do that work, and thank you.
Yeah, I'm guessing that it's synonymous with whatever academic ineligibility rules are in existence, so it would just be good if there is continued question about that, just to clarify. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Heather.
Heather.
One question?
I was just going to say, just from the student's perspective, I think adding that flexibility of one class sort of takes away the ambiguity of the teacher's decisions and allows for sort of a warning or a chance for a student to get their grade up before being completely ineligible. So, I think that's a great benefit.
Thank you. All of them?
Barbara, thanks for really nice to work on this. And to the students, just sort of, these habits of work things are really, really important. We hope this will reflect that, and I think you'll see that more and more, and we'll work through that as they get rolled out. Thanks.
Thank you, John. All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6D. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Cape Elizabeth High School Model UN World Affairs Council trip to Boston College for the Model UN Conference in Boston on March 16th through the 18th of next year.
May I have a second, please? Thank you. Jeff, if we may ask what may seem like the perennial questions about are all students that are part of Model UN given the opportunity to participate? Is there fundraising to help with the frank of cost, that sort of thing?
So, World Affairs Council does have a budget to support, but these are expensive programs. Students do a great job working together to raise funds, and certainly, it's open to anybody. And if there are students who need particular assistance, then that's found. Absolutely.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6E. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve Cape Elizabeth High School's Model UN World Affairs Council trip to Dartmouth College for the Model UN Conference in Hanover, New Hampshire, April 6th through 8th of next year.
All those in favor? Thank you. Item 6F. May I have a motion, please?
Actually, before you make a motion, I think there's an amendment that would be candidary to this.
Yes, indeed, there's a very minor change. And I've got a red line copy for you, and I'll just explain the rationale for that, Okay, so just two, well, first of all, just by way of background, so Troy and I believe that this is a really important position to have as we implement proficiency-based education in the leadership structure at Cape Elizabeth Middle School. This is true for most middle schools, is by grade level, grade level team leader, and then there might be an allied arts team leader, et cetera. But you don't typically have the equivalent of department chairs in the middle school. But when you're trying to implement proficiency-based education, you really need a department chair-like equivalent. You need a point person for ELA, a point person for math, a point person for science, and a point person for social studies. And that's what we're looking to create with this position, and it would be funded through the federal and state money that we get to implement proficiency-based education. So, the two changes that we wanted to make were to clarify that rather than these poor people having to meet with Troy and me, say, every day, it will just be monthly, so from regularly to monthly. And then, we eliminated the need for that person to attend, these people to attend team leader meetings. But everything else stands, as was originally in your packet.
Are these new positions being created?
Yes.
It's full-time? Is it full-time?
No, these are stipend positions. Yeah, I'm so sorry. Yeah, yeah, these are stipend, these are leadership positions.
Just beginning with those four content areas?
Yes. Well, we already have, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there is already an allied arts team leader on the grade level team, right? And is there one for world languages, too, already? Yes, right. So, but again, the core course is represented by team leaders, but you could have a team leader who, well, every teacher at the middle school teaches two of the four courses, so we really need dedicated content area to folk. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you explain the funding of this, please? Would you explain the funding?
Oh, yes. So, we receive money from the state, we have received money from the state, to implement proficiency-based education. It's called transition grant money. And so, we will pay the stipend out of that transition grant money. And we figure we have enough money to pay that stipend for the next two years, and then if at the, in that second year, we feel that this is something we want to continue, then we would need to budget for it going forward.
And are those stipends in line with what team leaders earn?
So, this stipend is in line with the stipend that the teachers who serve on the Teacher Effectiveness Committee are receiving, because the responsibilities are comparable.
John?
So, just to be clear, these new positions are revenue, are budget neutral?
That is correct. Yes.
Just to be very clear.
Yes, we're actually using the funds that were designed specifically for this purpose.
Excellent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good thinking. I was going to ask you about how this impacts budget. May I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the co-curricular job description for Content Leader Middle School.
May I have a second?
As a minute.
Yeah. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item 7, committee reports.
Let's start. The Town Conference of Planning Committee's next meeting is October 23rd at 7:00 p.m. Many of you, hopefully, have gotten in the mail a card with a link to an online survey, which is being sent out to everybody in the community. It's easy to miss, but if you know, to look out for it, it's there. If you don't think you've received it, you can go to the town website, and there is a link right there to the comprehensive plan survey, which is different from the forum that you register for, and every two weeks, they ask, they pose different questions. I think the current question has to do with cell coverage and expanding data and internet service throughout the community. So, the forum, the questions on the forum last for usually about two weeks. Once you register, you're free to interact and look at other people's answers. But I would say that this survey is really important, that everybody participate in every voter in the town.
Thank you for serving on that committee. It was a big commitment. Any other committee reports at this time? I know our committees are just getting going for the school year. I will just make a brief update. The superintendent search committee has not gotten going yet, but we will be meeting soon. All members of that committee will need to have a brief confidentiality and protocol, I'll call it training, but it's more of a conversation, and sign a confidentiality agreement. We will meet next week with different groups. We're trying to be flexible and meet with different people's schedules, and then the committee work will begin. Any other committee reports at this time? Okay. Item 8, school board agenda requests. John?
So, in conjunction with Howard's mention of start times, I'd like to request for some future time consideration upon the agenda, a workshop or in conjunction potentially with the calendar committee or and/or the wellness committee, a workshop on start times. The reason I say that start times is something that I've looked at extensively, and one of the things that I know from looking at that is if you don't begin the conversation early and build it the right way, you don't succeed. You may change your start time, but what happens then is hockey practice is at 5:00 a.m., and you don't get the benefit of changing your start times. So, you have to do it with people on board, having a discussion and understanding what you're in for. So, I'd like to sort of get that on the agenda and move it through the right committees and have the right participatory process, because this is something that's not going away. It's happening. All the folks at PAS, last time I was there, were all talking about it. It's on their radar, so they're trying to get it coordinated. And now, this is Scarborough moving, this is not going earlier. This is something that's coming, and we need to be prepared for it, and if we're going to do it, do it right. And so, we're going to need those discussions with wellness, calendar, and a workshop with the group.
Thank you, John. All school board agenda requests may be made via email or phone call. We don't do well with smoke signals. To myself, to Susannah as vice chair, or Howard, we like, for business meetings, we need to post at least five business days ahead of time, so make sure that you have your agenda requests in plenty of time before meetings. Item 9, announcements of upcoming meetings. Barbara?
So, policy, we'll get back together again prior to our workshop on October 24th, which is a Thursday. We'll be meeting at 5:30. Agenda, I'm sorry, Tuesday, October 24th, and the agenda in place will be posted.
Susannah, you've already talked about Town Comp.
Thank you.
October 23rd.
Thank you.
Any other upcoming meetings? Item 10, may I have a motion, please?
As we adjourned.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.